Good morning, everyone. It's May 8th. Call to order our regular meeting.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Harris?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Present.
And now I'll pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Good morning. I again appreciate the opportunity to come and offer an invocation before this meeting. Father, we just give you praise that we can be here today, that you have blessed us with this life, with the opportunity that you have given us to be alive at this time. We come together now at the start of this commission meeting, and I just want to make a thought within my own heart and my own life realizing what the word says, what the apostle Paul tells us, that there is no authority except that which God has established. Well, Lord, you brought this commission together. You brought us together here today in our various capacities as leadership and as citizenry to be at this meeting. I would ask that this council, this commission, would be able to make the decisions they need to make for the betterment of our community and that me as a citizen and us as citizens could come alongside this commission with encouragement, with support. We're all in this together, and we need to do what we can in order to make this the best possible place to live. Father, bless this commission in their decisions, bless our families, and bless our county employees from the office to the streets in all that they do. Lord, we just want to give you all the praise and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
So under correspondence and organizational business today, we have two proclamations, one honoring National Corrections Officers Week, which is this week, and the next week is National Police Officers Week. So we'd like to take a moment and recognize those folks. And I'll read the first proclamation, then Commissioner Dickinson will read the others. We'll have somebody from the sheriff's office come up and speak, and then we'll vote. First proclamation is to recognize National Corrections Officers Week and the contributions of corrections officers personnel to our nation in honor of the essential contributions they make in the day-to-day operations of jails and prisons without whom it would be impossible to achieve the foremost institutional goals of security and control. Whereas corrections officers are trained law enforcement professionals dedicated to maintaining safe facilities and ensuring public safety and have the difficult and often dangerous assignment of ensuring the custody, safety, and well-being of inmates and provide offenders with direction, hope, and new focus while assisting with reentry and life outside of corrections. Corrections officers rise to meet the challenges and serve this honorable profession notably and admirably. With the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, corrections officers with Franklin County Sheriff's Office deserve recognition for their service and should be commended for the exceptional performance of their duties under which, under the most difficult circumstances. And whereas in 1984, President Ronald Reagan signed Proclamation 5187 creating National Corrections Officers Week to be held the first full week of May. Therefore, be it resolved that Franklin County Board of County Commissioners will observe May 5th to 11th of this year as National Corrections Officers Week in Franklin County and Kansas and publicly salute the service of corrections officers in our community and in communities across this nation.
Actually, Tammy, the head of the jail is here. Does you want to make any comments before we go to the next one? All right.
We'll bring him down all at once.
All right, then. The next one, Proclamation 2405. To recognize National Police Week 2024 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Franklin County Sheriff's Office. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including Deputy Samuel Smith of the Franklin County Sheriff's Office on July 23rd, 2010. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas 282 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 118 officers killed in 2023 and 164 officers killed in previous years. And whereas members of the Franklin County Sheriff's Office play an essential part, role, in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Franklin County citizens. And whereas in 1961, President John F. Kennedy designated May 15th of each year as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. And therefore, be it resolved that the Franklin County Board of Commissioners will observe May 12th to 18th, 2024 as National Police Week in Franklin County, Kansas, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Signed this 8th day of May, 2024.
All right. Let's have everybody from the sheriff's office come down, because we're going to have a picture. And first, if there's anything you'd like to say, then we'll vote real quick.
I just wanted to say on behalf of our staff, thank you for issuing these proclamations. I know it's something that we do on an annual basis, but it's never for us anyway. And I don't think it is for you, just a thing where we're checking a box and going through the motions. We hear on a regular basis your appreciation, and we pass that on to our staff. And I appreciate the staff that we have that work for us as well and the dedication that they have. And particularly the dedication, the sacrifices made by each of those members' families, because they have to serve alongside, and they put up with the same callouts and the late-night phone calls and all those things. So it takes a team effort from each person in their home and then also when we get to work. So thank you guys very much for that. I do have Tammy Alexander here. She's our jail commander. And Brian Ferguson, who is our patrol commander. I don't know if you guys have anything to say, but...
I just want to thank the commission for the proclamation today and all the work that you do for our county. I also have a card that my staff signed as a thank you for the raises that they received. It was very welcome. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. We're here to thank you, though, so. All right. So Proclamation 2404 is Corrections Officers Week. Is there a motion to approve that proclamation?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And 2405 is for Police Officers Week. Is there a motion to approve?
A move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Let's go take a picture.
I want to hear Brian say something.
Been a couple of years.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Lord.
Consent agenda today would include meeting minutes from May 1st and tax change orders in the amount of negative $1,175.30. Is there a motion to approve?
A move.
Second. Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson? Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. First item of businesses was Pat Campbell. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. How y'all doing today?
Good.
Good, good, good. Which is first? Lake Region? All right. What this is on Lake Region Solid Waste Authority, and Dawn can speak of it as well, with the recent resignation of the Runen Bridge Director here, there's some modifications that needs to happen for the Lake Region Board. The board consists of seven counties, and there's two members and an alternate for each county. At this present time, I am set up as the alternate. So if possible, need to get me into the, and to be, Dawn and I would be the direct members again. And then, you know, we can appoint an alternate at a later time. The reason this all came about is at our last meeting, they decided they wanted to vote me as vice president of the organization. And I said, "I'll do it," but there's a caveat. I said, "I'm an alternate. I'm not eligible." So that's a formality that we need to run through in order, if y'all desire for me to be the vice president of it. Nobody else stepped up to do it, and they asked me, I said, "Well, if we can, you know, if we get ducks in a row, I don't have a problem," so.
So we would need to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Stottemeyer and Pat Campbell as two regular voting members on the Lake Region Solid Waste Management Committee with an alternate to be named at later dates. Is there a motion?
A move.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Stay.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And like I say, once we decide who a good alternate might be, we'll go through this formality again, too, to name them on the board as well.
All right. Great. Thanks. Do you have anything you need me to sign?
Uh, no. Nope, do not.
All right. Thank you, sir.
So I've got the second item for you, too, so.
Oh, the purchase of the bucket for the tipping floor. Gotcha.
What this is for, this is for the transfer station out there, where our backup machine has a bucket on it that is, it's beyond its life. It's been repaired and repaired, and then the repairs have been repaired. And the problem is, on those big buckets like that, you go to weld them, the metal gets just so brittle, and then it breaks again, and then you're trying to weld metal or weld brittle metal, and then it just, it doesn't hold up. We've actually had two buckets out there. We're using the better of the two as our backup right now, and it's not very good. You can actually see the swag in as it lifts up. So what this is going to do, we will put this new bucket on our new machine and use it as our everyday driver. Then the bucket that came with the new machine will become the backup bucket, and it is a size smaller. The older bucket is. This bucket is a bigger bucket. It's a two-yard bucket. It's got the rubber scraper on it. And I was happy to see the two bids that we received. They were very, very close. They're like a hundred, less than 140 bucks different. But they were actually the very, very same bucket, and they weren't two different brands or anything. It was actually a Red Apple and a Red Apple. So we just, we chose to go with the one that was the cheaper, you know, dollar-wise. But like I said, you know, they're looking to be four to six weeks out before we take delivery, so.
And the larger bucket, too, is good for operations. It'll keep them from happening to maneuver the machine as mentioned.
Correct. Yeah, this will have a bigger back, what I call a backsplash on it. And like I said, it's a half a yard bigger than our current bucket is, too.
All right.
So, and like I said, it already comes with the rubber scrapers. And then, you know, so like the rubber scrapers, we just had to replace the ones on the other bucket, and that was $2,200. So, I mean, we take, I was floored at the price of the bucket, you know, so. But for this type of operation is pretty specific, so.
Is there a motion to approve the bid from Foley Equipment in the amount of $14,750 for a bucket for the transfer station tipping floor?
Motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, I talked to the operator out there when I had a free dump day about it. He said that two yards not going to be ideal.
Yeah, it'd be a lot better, for sure. Yep.
I will guess.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all.
All right. Third item is rezoning application. Good morning, Pat.
Off. Whatever you guys want it to be. Good morning.
I'll Pat Campbell.
I'm just playing. So, yeah, today we're going to be looking at a location roughly three miles north of the city of Ottawa, commonly known as 4080 Highway 59 or Old Highway 59. This rezoning application is the request for two portions to come off of a 120-acre tract, first being a 2.25-acre addition to an existing one-acre parcel. The 2.25-acre addition would be moving a non-compliant parcel into compliance with our regulations. Currently, it has a home with all of the necessities as far as sewage, utilities, everything that's needed. There are two additional structures on the property, but they're both, although they do look like residences, they are and have been confirmed as storage. They are not currently attached to any of the sewage or anything like that. There's currently just miscellaneous items being stored inside of them. The other portion of this is in 11.63 acres to the south of that, being changed to the RE District. We have a letter from Rule 105 stating they have capabilities for additional water meters. And the large, it is large enough to accommodate any type of sewage needed for our feature home. All new entrances will need to be approved by the Franklin County Public Works, and it, there does appear to be plenty of room to make the distance between driveways. So staff recommends approval, and Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval as well.
Right. Any questions? This is rezoning application 2403-0001. Is there a motion to approve?
A move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. Our next rezoning application.
Yes, this is located about a half mile or just there shy of, south of Homewood, commonly known as 1650 Idaho Road. The rezoning request is to move 10 acres of an existing approximate 34-acre tract from the A2 District to the RE District. This leaving the remaining 23.51 acres into the A2 District. The owner would like to retain, excuse me. The owner would like to retain the 10-acre parcel to continue living on while selling off the remaining 23.51 acres as their source for retirement. The 10-acre parcel currently has a home with all utilities already in place, and the remaining 23 acres is large enough to require, for any kind of required sanitation and is over the size requirement for proof of water. The added lot does not appear to create any detriment to the surrounding areas. We already are somewhat dense as Homewood has a pretty dense population opposed to the surrounding area. Staff also recommends approval, as well as the Planning Commission unanimously unanimously voted to recommend approval.
All right. Questions for Pat?
I just want to make a comment. What I really like about this one is, if you look at the map, it is crazy the way it came out, but it's completely leaving a field, the field that's a field, a field, instead of making those lines in the middle of it. So that's what we want to see. So I would make the motion to approve.
All right. That's rezoning application 2402-2118. Is there a second?
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Pat?
Thank you, guys.
Item five is to consider approving a 20% increase to the pay, maximum pay rate for pay grades associated with corrections officers and corporal positions.
Yeah, good morning. Last week, as you all know, you approved pay increases for our corrections staff. With that, we have a handful of employees who are now either at the top of the pay range or very close to the top of the pay range. So I am requesting approval to increase the max pay rate by 20% specifically for the corrections officer and corrections corporal positions. The last time we did this across the board was in 2021. Yes, 2021. We increased all of our pay ranges by 27% at that point. Since then, we've had county-wide increases, and then these increases on top of it, we're getting close again to the top of the rate, so.
Need to make room for them to be able to work inside of. All right. So is there a motion to approve the 20% increase to the maximum pay rates for pay grade 15 and pay grade 20 specifically for the corrections officer and corrections corporal positions? That'd be effective the 21st of this year, April 21st.
I'm going to go through to Brian.
All right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson? Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Thank you. Sixth item. Christie's here to discuss potentially buying an ambulance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I didn't expect to find one this quickly, but we did.
Baked it, too.
I know I've given you a lot of information, but I wanted to walk you through the process of how we got to this ambulance and kind of some things that we did look at that we didn't think were feasible and talk through just the process of how we came to this. So we have traditionally used in the past Lifeline as a vendor. The last interaction that I had with Lifeline, unfortunately, was a bit of a squabble between whose territory we were in with leaving two people arguing, and it just was not a good dynamic. So as such, we did reach out to three new vendors. With them, ARV, they are located out of Emporia. They have said, they thought they had found us an ambulance. They did not. But they said that we could get a demo model off of their production line in August, and it would be ready in October. However, the cost of that one, I know I have it somewhere in the notes, was it was quite pricey.
$337?
Yeah, that was, that would be correct. The one that was over, I think it was $337. And that does not include the equipment to load, to put the cot in the back, I don't believe. To another company named Medics, they did try to find us something, but they were not able to. And then we had a dealership named Pinnacle, and they're out of Bentonville, Arkansas. And they reached out, and they said that they had one for us, and it was $315,000. And I thought that was a little bit steep, and the setup of it wasn't really conducive for what we needed it to be. And then they really put their boots to the ground and found an ambulance that absolutely meets our needs and talked to the manufacturer. It's up in New York State right now, gave them our story, and they said they were willing to hold it for us until today. So my division chief, Jason Hudson, and I went down to Arkansas last week and saw the ambulance, because it is a different design than what we have, and it was quite nice. So this is the one that we're looking at in the amount of...
$258,380.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You guys are saving me today.
While talking this through with Janet, we're going to go ahead and recommend that this gets paid for out of risk management as opposed to her equipment reserve. We've done that with the sheriff's office when they've had vehicles get totaled. So we'd like to do the same thing here, particularly in light of EMS's recent revenue shortage. And so if you don't have any more questions, then I think we're ready for a motion.
Does any of it come out of the other driver's insurance?
So I'm not 100% involved with that, but it is my understanding, one, he did not have enough coverage. He just had state minimum. But two, K-Camp was going to go file some kind of whatever insurance they do.
So whatever, whatever. If we do, we do. If we don't, we don't.
That would be correct.
That amount gets reimbursed to that account, I assume, how that works, so.
I do want to be just 100% transparent with this as well. This vehicle, the quote that you have, does include what's called a power load system, which I gave you all of the information with that. It is a system where it will automatically, the cot fits in a track, and it literally pulls it in there. So this will take the place of, one, you know, just muscle strength, because even though we have the power loads, I'm sorry, we have the power cots. You still have to physically load them in the back. But it also will eliminate the need for, well, that truck will always 100% be a bariatric unit, and we're not having to winch people into the back and hopefully save a little bit of dignity. And also, it's readily available. We're not having to wait for another unit. If you did not want that, there is another, there is another option. It saves $23,000 with them reconfiguring the cots. They are all going to a, to the power cots. And so the old-school antlers and the, you have to push it, that's going away. So we'd have to get a different type of track installed in the bottom of the ambulance, anyway.
I think just one good lifting injury, which we've had several in the past, would easily cover that, so.
It literally is a career-ending injury. So Pinnacle also has told us that they can do all of the remounts. We went and toured the remount factory and walked in and said, "Well, I recognize that color scheme. It was Johnson County Med Act." So they use them as well. They did say that they would send for remount a technician out to our facility to inspect the unit. That way, they could check welds and make sure that it was still safe to remount, and we would know beforehand versus sending it out to the facility and them saying, "No, this isn't safe for remount." So lots of good things look like with Pinnacle.
Right. So this would require making a motion to approve the purchase of the 2024 Ford E350 Crestline ambulance from Pinnacle Emergency Vehicles in the amount of $258,380. Is there a motion?
I would say approve. Got it.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. And you have our final item of business, Christie.
I do. With the cost of that power load system, we do have the option to have an extended warranty on it. The power cot itself comes with a two-year warranty, and the power load system comes with a one-year warranty. We can extend that warranty up for a total of seven years so that both the cot and the, and the power load system have a warranty with it. It does, I did give you a brochure of what the ProCare services entail. And if you look at it, we, they will send a Striker representative to us at no charge to do all of the repairs on them. Plus, we get annual PM inspections. We get documentation that we have had those done. They do give us loaners if we have to send one in for repair. We get automatic and free software upgrades and updates. One of the things is, right now, when we call, it's kind of a tedious process with this. We do get a two-hour callback time, so we do get prioritized with it. But one of the things that I found very interesting with it is it gives us the ability to use what's called the Smart Equipment Management Dashboard. And just like our smartphones, cots are now smart as well. So it records data on lifting and moving and how we're handling the cot in real time. Then we can utilize that dashboard to gather the information where we can actually look at best practices, work with Striker to train our people to, again, to reduce injury and make sure that we are picking up our patients in the best way possible, which is, I mean, that was, that was nice. But this one I could pay for out of my equipment reserve. And definitely, since we're spending that much money, wanted to bring an option of an extended warranty for you.
Okay. So we would potentially be making a motion to approve the purchase of the Power Pro, ProCare 60-month extended warranty in the amount of $5,636, and a power load ProCare 72-month extended warranty in the amount of $9,350.40 for total cost of $14,986.40. Anyone care to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. While you're up here, anything for staff reports?
I just wanted to give you an update on the ambulance station. They work on it in spurts, it seems like. I know they have, they...
on it in spurts, it seems like. Um, I know they have, they came out the gate working really hard, and it's, we're all getting very anxious. Still not quite there, but, um, the building is now secured and locked up, and we're just waiting till we can get our final walkthrough. Almost all of the furniture is now in for the station, so as soon as they give us the ready, uh, we'll do that final walkthrough, and, and we'll be ready to go. As soon as we have a definitive date, we're gonna plan an open house for the community.
Great. All right. Jerry? Nothing today, Cole. Paul? Morning.
Thought I'd just give you a general update, um, on, on several things. Um, in April, uh, Proximity Park, we got six inquiries, um, and all of them from the Commerce Department. Uh, two of them required rail, so we couldn't respond to those, and two of them required an existing building, so we couldn't respond to those. The other two were pretty preliminary requests. They were just asking for marketing material and not an in-depth, uh, response. So, uh, that indicates they're very early in their search process, so, uh, don't expect a lot of movement on those anytime soon. Uh, so that's kinda what's happened in the last month with, uh, Proximity Park. Um, we have been working with, as you know, working with Princeton and trying to help them find money for their stormwater issues, and we're able to have a very good meeting with, uh, Representative Sharice David's office, uh, about, uh, making an application to her office, uh, for funding for the whole project, which is about three-quarters of a million dollars for that stormwater project. And then her office, uh, took those in from her district and selected fifteen that she forwarded on to the Appropriations Committee, and, and Princeton's, it's in the machinery in Washington. Uh, so that would be, uh, federally funded if, if approved by appropriations. We're also going the other track still with the grant. We had asked for, uh, uh, grant for, through the infrastructure bill, and for the whole project, and that was denied. And so, we're reorganizing and can apply again, I, I believe in July. Uh, and we'll, we'll ask for just one or two phases. I think part of the issue there is, when they look at the grants, how many, how many people is it impacting? And since that's a pretty small community, I can see where they thought three-quarters of a million might be spent in a more populated area. So, we're gonna adjust our, our ask, and still be very helpful to the community. It'd be probably two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand that we're gonna ask for. Um, also gonna be heading up to Wellsville and meeting with staff and commission, uh, trying to get, uh, information gathered that we can submit again through the infrastructure bill for infrastructure for Wellsville. Either, uh, depending on what they're, where they're at up there, uh, get grant money to hire, uh, an engineering firm to kinda work up some, um, ideas of what can be done for maintenance and expansion of infrastructure, or if they do that internally, then, uh, we need that done, and then we can go ask for money to actually do the work. So, we're kinda working through that with Wellsville. And, um, those are kinda the highlights. Happy to answer any questions? Hadn't been in front of you for a while, so thought I'd...
I can't remember, since I've been here, anything coming from this community up to appropriations at a federal level, so.
Yeah, I really appreciated, uh, Sharice David's office. They, uh, they were fabulous to work with, and, and, uh, are kinda carrying water for us. So, deeply appreciate her, her service to us.
Hope, hope it works out.
Yeah.
Certainly a nice gesture, nothing else.
Yeah.
Be a huge deal, uh, for that community.
Absolutely.
Those amounts of money.
Very much needed, yeah.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Anything from Sheriff's Office?
We hand you that proclamation. I just wanted to say once again, thank you. As Lieutenant Alexander said, thank you for the, uh, for taking care of the corrections staff and for those increases. I've talked with Amy this week, and this, uh, since that was done, we've had more applications that we've received than we had in a long time, maybe the whole week, rest of the year combined. It was, we've had a lot. So, um, so I think that was the intended purpose. Now, we're kinda sifting through those. Uh, some, many of those, I think, look like they're probably gonna be people wanting it's part-time, 'cause that's how we were kinda making things meet before. And so, but we've, um, now we have the opportunity to go through those. So, I think, uh, it's, I think it was very impactful. So, we do, we do appreciate that. Again, I appreciate the, uh, what was, what you guys have done there, um, not just with those increases, but what you do with the, uh, the pay scale, just so that most people know, um, really, there's not a lot of financial impact upfront to the county when we do that, 'cause those increases with their, at the top, you know, they get that bonus anyway. But this does impact our employees long-term, as far as when it comes to retirement and things, and that's not, that's not lost on our staff. They understand that, that, that county is looking out for, uh, for them, and it's very much appreciated. So, um, do, do thank you for that. And again, this is Corrections Week. Next week is Police Week. Um, this last week, we had, uh, memorial ceremonies up in Topeka for, um, to honor Kansas law enforcement. And, um, we, on, one night, um, Lieutenant Alexander escorted Katie Smith, Sam Smith's mom, up to that, uh, to the candlelight ceremony. And then the next day, under Sheriff Lastwell and I, were her escorts to the, uh, to the ceremony there with the governor. And so, um, we appreciate still the sacrifice that, that was made by, uh, by Katie and, and her family when, uh, when everything went through with Sam, and, you know, they, they supported him as he followed his, his desire, and that's, um, but we, she's still part of our family very much, and we, we wanna honor her and Sam's sacrifice, um, continually. And so, we did, we're able to do that last week in another way, so, um, very much appreciated. So, um, that's all I have, unless you guys have questions from me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. From Communications or Human Resources? No? All right, Public Works?
Thank you. Just briefly, uh, we finished dust control this week. So, um, typically, we usually run about fifteen loads. This year, we had twenty-one, so they were, I believe we had a hundred-and-seventy-five, a hundred-and-seventy-eight sites, which is probably the most we've ever had. So, I guess that program is thriving. Um, minimal storm damage this week. Uh, we're getting the, the benefits of the rains, but we're not really seeing the, what everybody else is, so we're grateful for that. Uh, we have interviews today to try to get back to full staff with, uh, in a, with a blade position. And that's all I have. I, I do wanna thank, uh, Kirk Anderson, Resty Tall, as we've gone through this transition. Those guys have carried the water for me out at the shop quite a bit, and, and so have the seasoned employees that, uh, have really stood up to try to get this transition made. So, I wanna thank them while I have an opportunity to. That's all I have.
Right. Clerk elections, Commissioners, Dunn?
Uh, yeah, I didn't, rant tool canceled the other night 'cause of the tornado coming in, so made next week. The only other thing I might mention, yesterday, we had a RCND meeting, and it Crystal Anderson, there from ECAN, CEO there, that came in and gave us all the details. They do represent five of the counties that are in, in the six county area. And she gave us a lot of good detail and the amount of the, I didn't realize, I don't remember the exact numbers, it was like a couple hundred rentals that they provide for people who always come out, you know, and everything, throughout the five counties, six, well, eleven counties really all together. But anyhow, it was pretty interesting. And, uh, the only thing I might mention, we've partnered with them on two projects the last twenty-five years. One of them is the bike program, and the other is the highest feeding the hungry. So, I kinda went back through the record on that. And since we started with them, we provided, uh, eighty thousand pounds of meat to them over the last twenty-five years. So, that's went over, and still doing good. In fact, she's expanding that a little bit, 'cause of the project cuts and stuff. They did away with some of the freezers and some of their offices downsizing and whatever. And she is attempting to get some grant money and expand that back open again. So, that's all I got.
Roy?
Yes, I went to the same meeting that I was talking about, and Crystal Anderson, CEO of, uh, ECAN, was there to give a, a overview of, uh, the seventeen counties that ECAN, um, serves, and, uh, the footprint of the organization was quite a bit various. So, uh, it's a big organization. They have about a hundred-and-twenty employees altogether. And, um, of course, they, they, they care from babies to, uh, in the pre-head start and head start, all the way up to adults, you know, that kinda help, uh, help people that are disoriented to find opportunities and, and the weather rehabilitation programs to help them save money on the utilities and that sort of thing. So, it is a nice, uh, presentation by Crystal. Also, uh, I was gonna go to the Republican Central Committee meeting, uh, this Monday, but it was canceled. But I went ahead and, and made an official announcement, uh, to the chairman that I will not be, uh, seeking reelection, uh, for the third district. Uh, I wanted to get that out there, so people that are interested in, uh, running from county commissioner, uh, they got to what, June one, how to file.
June first.
When's the filing deadline for Commissioner?
June third at noon.
June third?
Yep.
June third, just filed if they, uh...
You gotta remember that noon part, too.
At noon. Yeah, we can't take some...
'Cause we've had people...
June third at noon, if you're interested, and you live in the third district, throw your hat in the ring.
High noon at the courthouse.
At the courthouse, yes. That's all I have.
And this is not necessarily my favorite time of year. I don't really appreciate all the storms coming through, but it's a time where I really appreciate our emergency management, um, person, Tom Winter. Um, I was glad that he was wrong on Monday, uh, when he made the, the announcement that somebody in Kansas was gonna have a very large tornado. And, uh, it did not happen in Kansas. It did happen, though, on Monday night. Um, I did wanna make, uh, the, the week before, the tornado in West Merlin in Potawatomi County killed one person, and that person happened to be a Potawatomi County employee, a long-term employee at the Health Department. Um, so, even though it's not us, it happens. I'm, every time it doesn't happen in Franklin County, I praise the Lord, but, um, it is happening, and it seemed like every day, some, it's happening somewhere. Um, the only things I went to this week were, uh, Friday, there was, uh, announcement of the new manager at, um, Chamber Coffee at Great Southern Bank. And then, um, Princeton actually did have their meeting, not on Monday. They moved it to Tuesday because of the weather, and they were very appreciative of your work. On that, hopefully, some of this will come to fruition. Um, and then, it's kind of exciting. I mean, we, as a county, we deal with things, but all of our, I mean, Wellsville, Ottawa, and Princeton are all working on housing, um, developments, and that's exciting, uh, for the county to, to know that things are happening. And, uh, that's all I got.
There must be a adjourned. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Call in favor?
All right.
We're adjourned.